Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. Craig, did I -- is there something on the agenda for zoning or annexation?
I think it's bicycle lanes, Mayor.
We don't have this crowd normally.[21.02][21.02](Laughter). It's great that we have this many of our citizens join us on this particular day. It's probably the most important day of ever two years at least for this community. And it's heartfelt that you're here with us, and we appreciate it so much. That said, Chris, introductions.
Well, I'm just with you on that one, Mayor. Last time I saw a crowd this big, we put a stop sign in the wrong place.[60.71][60.71](Laughter). But no, I see a lot of representatives from our sister cities are here, from El Salvador, Mexico, and Germany. And if you guys might want to stand up and wave to everybody and everyone that's involved with Sister Cities, you guys are all over the crowd. Why don't you stand up and show yourselves?[76.64][76.64](Applause). I've got to watch all their hard work, Mayor, and these guys do a great job.
Couldn't agree more. It's certainly our honor, and it'll be the last time for me at least, but I hope it's not the last time for her. We welcome Reverend Kimball Arnold, St. Luke's Episcopal Church, that will lead us in the invocation. Thank you for being here, Kim.
Let us pray. As we gather this day, we give thanks for all the members of Prescott City Council who stepped forward to serve this great city. And for the generations of brave men and women who secured our liberty, we give thanks. We especially offer thanks for Marlin, Chris, and Charlie, and their commitment to serving the people of Prescott, and all they've accomplished during their terms of service. We pray for them and their future endeavors. They have served this community with dignity, integrity, and passion. There have been challenges facing the city council these past few years, and we are grateful for the leadership offered by all members of the city council. As the new council members and mayor take office this day, we offer prayers for them as they begin to tackle the challenges which lay ahead. May they have discerning minds as they work through the matters requiring their discussions and decisions. We offer thanks for the staff and for all they do to keep the council members informed, and for the work they do to help the city of Prescott. We offer thanks for those who step forward out of civic duty and personal responsibility. May we all work together for the benefit of the citizens of the city of Prescott. Amen.
Join me in the pledge, will you?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dana, I'm not going to forget roll call.
Okay.
Roll call.
Mayor Kirkandall.
Here.
Mayor Protam Kukneo.
Here.
Councilman Arnold.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Lizelle.
Here.
And Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
All present.
Announcements, Mr. Manager?
No special announcements today.
No special?
Thank you.
I have one. Jim, why don't you join me, and we're going to walk around front. And I'm going to borrow my mic. Mark, where are you?
Here's what, here.
Okay.
He's controlling from the back.
You know, as you spend the number of years in this business that I have, six years, Jim is on 12. And you live in a community like this that time to time requires special attention by some of our citizens. And Jim and I are honored today representing the council to ask a friend of ours to come forward that does an awful lot for our community and never asks anything in return. Butch Hampton, you got a moment?[306.41][306.41](Applause). Kleenex?[323.77][323.77](Laughter). Do we need Kleenex?
No, we're good.
Oh, man, I am going to have to put my glasses on.
You don't have to read it.
All right.
Just tell it, tell you not, you're going to know what.
Butch, for being who you are, for doing what you do, all the things you do for this community that go unsung, don't go unnoticed. Thank you very much, Butch, for being who you are.[355.03][355.03](Applause).
The -- one of the pleasures that I've had is not only knowing Butch since he was a youngster, but knowing his father. And I believe your dad went to business in 1956.
Yeah.
Pretty close.
Yeah.
And has served this community well. And Butch has followed doing things for our community that none of us expect, but from time to time happens in our families. So, on behalf of the city of Prescott, the effort that you extended and the perfection that you created in handling the hot-shot funerals, and we're still working our way through some of them, including you, we know that. And then more recently, an event of a young lady that was a student at Ember Riddle, a tragedy that you were able to keep things together and make sure that a family was well-served. So, we could go on and on and on. And we won't talk about Butch and his dad set a record of traveling from Prescott to one of the hospitals in Phoenix in a Pontiac station wagon that I sold them.[457.34][457.34](Laughter). Forty-six minutes with?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five.
But it was a true lane highway.
Okay. But Butch, thank you. Okey-dokey, let's move on to the consent agenda.
Item A: Approval of minutes for the city council meetings held on November 10, 2015. Item B: Approval of final plat FP 14-003 for the Madison Park cottages, a six-lot, single-family planned area development pan -- development subdivision, fast-forward addition zoning multi-family medium-density APN 113-14-053, property owner Habitat for Humanity. Item C: Acceptance of two grants and approval to purchase equipment from the grant funds. One, Arizona Department of Homeland Security for eight each twin port specialist responder kits in the amount of $9,000. And two, U.S. Department of Justice through the Edward Byrd Memorial Justice Assistant Grant in the amount of $12,460 for two each of PBS-14 Generation III night vision equipment with ballistic helmet, Police Department. And item D: Adoption of resolution number 4312-1521 regarding contracts with city council members or city employees for fiscal year 2016.
Any discussion on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items 1A through 1D.
Second. Motion made in the second, and vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, let's move on to our regular agenda. Item A.
Item 2A: Adoption of resolution number 4311-1520, adopting the Prescott pedestrian and bicycle plan.
Good afternoon, Ian.
Yeah, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Approval of this item will adopt the Prescott pedestrian and bicycle plan by resolution as a council policy regarding alternative transportation in Prescott. This is an updated document which replaces the 2003 bicycle and pedestrian master plan, and it's referenced in the Prescott general plan, which was recently ratified in August this year. As background, the 2003 plan had undergone several reviews, starting in 2008 by the city's pedestrian and bicycle advisory committee, then by Prescott Alternative Transportation in 2013. But these revised versions were never moved forward for adoption, and the effort to update the plan was stalled. In February of this year, through a request by Councilwoman Wilcox, and with the support of the mayor, a pedestrian and bicycle working group was formed to undertake final review and editing of the master plan update. This effort ultimately led to a plan that takes a broader approach than previous efforts, and it focuses on planning to encourage alternative transportation modes and eliminating the location-specific improvements that were included in the prior plans. Specifically, the document emphasizes three primary goals: improving pedestrian and bicycle safety, improving infrastructure to that mean -- to that end, and increasing non-motorized trips. The plan also includes general strategies to reach the goals. The plan was presented to the Prescott Planning and Zoning Commission in October, where it received unanimous approval. This is a planning document with no defined financial impact to the city. Any future costs which may be associated will be quantified at an individual project level, and there'll be opportunity for review prior to approval. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, and I'd also like to add that Bill Finelli, he's a member of the Bicycle Working Group, he is present, and he may like to say a few words about the plan and the process behind it.
Okay, why don't we, hold on, go ahead and have him come forward. Jane, would you like to introduce him?
Sure.
Yeah, Jane is responsible for bringing this issue back to the council and moving it forward. So, Jane, we thank you for that. I think that we have a good plan now, and we can move forward. So, it's your mic.
Thanks, Mayor. It was a real pleasure to get together with a group of people who have a dedicated and sincere interest in bicycle safety, pedestrian safety, and vehicular safety. And we had really fun meetings, I think, good discussions. Ian Mattingly joined us, Henry Hash joined us, and Teresa from the Public Works Department took minutes with us. Especially want to thank Paul Catan for taking the 2003 draft, 2009 draft, and working it down to a six-page guide that is more like a plan instead of a project list. And Bill was one of members of our committee, and also one of the people who rode the route 70 -- proposed bicycle Route 79, and helped identify what the best route would be. And really, thank you, Bill, and let us --
Yeah, I'm ahead of the work. Bill Finelli, 5805 Cinnamon Drive, right next to the annexation area, but we're not here to talk about that.
You can pull that mic over towards you.
Sounds good, thanks. Just wanted to -- my wife and I have been here now a year now, and we moved to Prescott for biking for me and for horseback riding for her. And I'll tell you, we could not be happier that we've moved here from Chicago, so it's fantastic.[843.94][843.94](Laughter). Especially when they got 10 inches of snow last week. Anyway, on behalf of the working group, I really want to thank Councilwoman Wilcox and the mayor, and the rest of the council for being supportive in this process. Cycling in Prescott has its challenges, more around the geography of the hills and narrow roads and so forth, but it is something that is growing. One of our bike groups here, Bike Prescott, now has about 100 members of mostly road cyclists, and we all want to kind of work together so that we can increase cycling safety and pedestrian safety here, and do it in a way that is not confrontational also, that people, both cyclists and motorists, get used to, you know, working together, getting through the road safely and as quickly as possible. So again, just want to thank for -- thanks for the support, and also the Public Works Group, Henry and Ian have been very helpful, and it's been great working with them as well. So, thanks again.
Thank you for being here. Anything, Council?
I do. Just out of curiosity.
Go for it.
Going back to 2001, before the Bicycle Ped Plan came out, we made the concerted effort, the council at the time did, to every single year put certain amount of money aside to connect sidewalks, because you'd be in a neighborhood, all of a sudden you're walking down a sidewalk, and then there's nothing. So, we've come a long way since then in the sidewalk infrastructure, whether it be along Lincoln Avenue for kids pushing baby carriages, and I call them kids because they look like kids pushing little kids. But I think we've come a long ways, and I have some concern, and I'm not sure where to bring it up, but there is a proliferation in this community now of bicycles that have motors on them. I would like somebody to share with me within this plan how those bicycles are going to be treated, whether it's through the Police Department, Public Works, through the Bicycle Ped Plan. Are they bicycles in a bicycle lane? Are they treated as a vehicle, a moving vehicle? How are they treated throughout the state, and how should we treat them in this community? Because there are ongoing issues that I see every day, and I'd like to have that addressed.
Mayor and Council, I'll confer with the Police Department and come back with a report to the entire council.
Okay. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Gene, for resurfacing this. And, you know, I attended many of the general plan meetings from the get-go in 2003 on through, and P&amp;Z with the liaison. This has been looked at quite a bit. Along with Councilman Blair, I do have some concerns with proliferation of alcohol and drug rehabilitation. There seems to be also proliferation of various forms of transportation that coincide where they don't need driver's licenses traversing the streets. And I just want to make sure that from a public health and safety perspective, that they're held to the same standard for behavior as anybody else with a motorized vehicle on the roads. So I'm just bringing that up, that it's something that needs to be right up front. With that, I have no hesitation whatsoever in trying to move this forward. I just want to remind the community, there's people that have responsibility, whether they're in a car, or a foot, or on some form of two-wheel transportation, they still have the same legal responsibility as other folks do.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Steve, I think they get by with it because they're 49cc engines, and they're not -- and 50, I think, requires a license. But the brakes on a bicycle aren't set up to have a 49cc engine pulling around, so you might not see those guys around for too long.[1061.58][1061.58](Laughter).
I just have one comment. This -- it's a good plan. I read it two or three times, and Ian, correct me if I'm wrong, but other than the key at the bottom, they don't -- there's nothing in here about all the inner-city trails that we've worked on so hard over the years to kind of divert some of that pedestrian and bicycle traffic onto those trails. I was just wondering why that was.
Yeah, I just -- I don't think it was necessarily left out in general. You know, this is a planning document that talks about encouraging infrastructure and those things.
Sure.
And so, while there probably wasn't room to specifically focus on some of the areas, so.
As we go forward with some of these, with the education and signing and marking, maybe we should encourage those trails. That's probably the safer place than.
Sure, sure.
When it's afforded, to put them on the trails instead of on the road.
And that's really the intent of the plan, is to be a planning document so that individual projects, and as we move forward, those things can be looked at in detail, you know, encouraging those alternate modes. And what that means is that there's flexibility in how we look at it.
Sure. Thank you.
Charlie?
Well, Mayor, I'll be the seventh. Just real quick question. Mr. Willis is one of our bike riders in town, specifically rides a bike. And I don't know if you've had a chance to look at the plan, but is this a good start from your perspective?
I just shot from back there.
If you'd like to.
I was involved with the process that Gene was describing, and actually, I was the chair of the working group. But we made a point of putting these particular pieces out to separate task forces, and I did sit on the task force that developed this plan. But, you know, I always tried to make sure that other people who were participating were empowered to do these things. The general concept of creating overarching goals and overarching principles and some basic metrics to see whether we're moving toward those principles, I did subscribe to as part of the process. I have reactions to some of the stuff I've been hearing from the council, but that's a whole separate -- it's a whole separate thing. I did, on my way over here, I only lived three blocks away, I saw three motorists colliding. That's because I have my radar up.
Well, thank you for that. And, Gene, thank you for your work on getting this done. Glad that we can hopefully adopt this right now.
Okay. Let's go to the public now. Any comments from the public? How are you?
I'm all right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm here to probably surprise you a little bit. My name is Jim Knapp, 200 Parker Road. I'm the owner of Power Sports Outlet, a motorcycle dealership, and Ironclad Bicycles, both which employ people, collect taxes, and are located in Prescott. I am here today to ask you not to approve the ordinance, as ordinance, the pedestrian and bicycle plan you are being presented with today. Instead, I would encourage you to act on one of the strategies outlined in this plan and reinstate the official and official pedestrian and bicycle advisory committee to provide regular input on city plans and projects that will impact pedestrian and bicycle use. In 2007, I was chairman of Prescott's Bicycle Advisory Committee. Our task at that time was to review the 2003 plan to see if it was being fully implemented. There was a strong recommendation that the plan -- that there is a strong recommendation in that plan that the city worked toward creating a bicycle and pedestrian coordinator position. And Appendix P of that plan contained a job description of that position. A problem arose when we could not locate Appendix P. And in fact, after enlisting the help of the city clerk, planning and zoning, community development, public works, Parks and Rec, the city library, we were only able to locate appendices A through D. Appendices E through P could not be produced. We even contacted Betty Drake of Draken Associates, who wrote the plan, to no avail. There were other inconsistencies and incongruities in the 2003 plan, and time was marching on. We met with Mayor Wilson, who agreed the Bicycle Master Plan needed an update, and we set to do that as a volunteer committee with the assistance of Steve Gaber of the Planning and Zoning Department. That resulted in what is now known as the 2009 Plan Update, which was reviewed by the Parks and Recreation Committee, Traffic Coordinating Committee, and at a public presentation at the library. In the fall of 2009, a new council was seated, the 2009 plan was shelved, and in January P-back, the committee was disbanded. Final edits of the plan were also done in January 2010 by Steve Gaber. In 2013, I was a board member of Prescott Alternative Transportation when we were approached by members of Prescott's General Plan Committee. Among other things, they had compiled a list of trail priorities that they thought should be documented in their plan. But were told their list was too specific for a general plan, and that such specifics belonged in associated plans like the Parks and Recreation Plan or the Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan. It was suggested that we organize a volunteer committee to dust off and freshen up the 2009 plan so it could include some of their priorities. We met with Mayor Kirkandall and George Worley, and were encouraged to proceed with that project. After public notice, we assembled a diverse group of community members and set about doing just that. We engaged in the tedious task of tearing through the old document page by page and line by line, with one initiative being a pedestrian-first approach, which recognized that not all Prescott citizens were bicyclists, but everybody was a pedestrian. Then we struggled getting someone in the council to help move that plan forward. Councilwoman Wilcox got some traction and organized a new pedestrian and bicycle working group, which we are told in the introduction of this new plan was charged with providing a final review and edit of the 2014 master plan update before presenting it to the city council for adoption. Mayor and council, that is not what you have in your packet. What you have been presented with today is six pages of new plan and 18 pages of the 2003 plan printed verbatim, but with no maps, edits, or changes. And of course, A through P appendices references are also not included. The 2009 and 2014 draft plans are referenced only in links, but only the link for the main body of the 2014 plan is referenced, and no links are provided for the associated maps or appendices of that plan. Of the six pages of the new plan, one page is introduction and background, one page is summary, and there are four pages of very generic goals and strategies, which were mostly cut and pasted from the ADOT statewide bicycle plan and do not acknowledge Prescott's unique challenges. This plan is stripped of a vision statement, and all priorities and specifics are also removed. The phrase "complete streets" does not appear once, and there is no goal of pursuing bicycle-friendly community status. There is no restatement of the need for a bicycle and pedestrian coordinator. It really feels like somebody is trying to do a quick one here. I consider myself an interested and concerned citizen, especially on this topic. But I only learned that this new plan was ready for public review yesterday when I read Cindy Barks' article in the paper, and the only place I could find it was starting on page 39 of the council packet. Compare these six pages to the 2009 update. Compare it to the 2004 update. Compare it to the Parks and Rec Master Plan. I can't believe there wasn't an opportunity for public comment. The six pages of this plan do not feel like they were written by citizens who care about the viability and safety of their community. It feels like it was written by public works to guide public works, and the foxes are not supposed to guard the hen house. This is better vision. There is better vision. Guidance, local goals and strategies outlined in section 7.5.2 of the recently ratified Prescott general plan titled Pedestrian and Bicycle Circulation, which also has a subsection on complete streets. Reliance on the general plan will serve the citizens of our community better than this plan. So again, I ask you not to approve this document as a pedestrian and bicycle master plan. Send it back. Let them know you're as insulted as I am to have 18 pages of the 2003 plan reproduced and called the 2015 plan. Again, I ask you to reestablish the Bicycle and Pedestri -- or the Pedestrian and Bicycle Advisory Committee so there is a conduit for citizens to share their safety concerns, so there is a potential for creative fixes to be considered, so there is citizen oversight to make sure new public works projects are safe and inclusive, so they don't neglect or even jeopardize some citizens. So, and so Prescott can compete -- ah, let me -- one last sentence. So Prescott can compete with other jurisdictions like Chandler, Gilbert, Scottsdale, Tucson, Flagstaff, Sedona, and Cottonwood, all of which are recognized as bicycle-friendly communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Before Jim leaves, any questions?
I just have a comment there.
Yeah, please.
Jim, a lot of what you say is being worked on, and we're getting there. This plan is a more general guide, and Public Works will be looking at this plan, and every time there's a project coming up, they're going to consult this plan. What we didn't want on the working group was a specific project list. What I found, and you'll see, Council, in looking at the 2003 plan, a lot of those projects have been done already, so.
That was 2003, and that's why that plan was out of date in 2008.
Well, the point is, a plan isn't a project list. It's a guide with concepts. And we are getting there, and I'm still dedicated to complete streets. It's an issue I want to bring back to the council with maybe a workshop, and I think Public Works is being very supportive in this first step in getting bicycle issues incorporated in our street program.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim, for your input.
Also, as a motorcycle dealer, I can tell you quite a lot about motorized bicycles.
Hi, Dan.
Hello. My name is Daniel Mattson. I hadn't been intending to come up here, but after hearing this last guy, I decided to let you know about quarter to two, I received a call from an avid bicyclist who was very upset about this plan. He felt that there was not enough opportunity for public input. He said that he was very much opposed to it being passed at this time without the cyclists in the community able to talk more about it. Gene, if you guys are making progress on it, that's great. I don't see any need for this to be passed today if there's questions as to the ability of people to give their input. It may be a great plan. I haven't had the opportunity to read it. I've been very busy lately, but this guy's comments really make me wonder, especially this guy called me earlier, this other guy called me earlier today. He does a lot of bicycling, bicycle riding, and he bicycles with a lot of other bicycle riders, and he doesn't feel that the -- that the general public, you know, the bicycling public had enough opportunity to give their input to this. So I think it would be wise to put this off for a couple meetings and give these people a chance to come up here and talk about it. I suggested to him that he do that very thing, and he said he hasn't had enough time to prepare. You know, a lot of people probably just found out about it from Cindy's article yesterday and haven't had a chance to really get together and see what they think about it or anything. So I'd like to suggest that you bring it back to a later meeting and give the public a chance to give their input.
Anyone else? Go.
Yeah, Mayor, I was just wondering, you know, Jim definitely did his homework on the whole thing. Seemed pretty knowledgeable about it, but I think it's important to move forward on this. I know Gene's been very passionate about it. Would you be willing to pull it for a short time to have public input and then come back with it again, or no?
Well, I think there's been ample opportunity for public input. Every one of our meetings has been noticed with an agenda. The Planning and Zoning Commission had it on their agenda, which is a published agenda. There was opportunity for people to come and review it and make their comments, and they can comment here.
As my understanding, this is a working document.
Yes.
It's not a final document, but it's a place to start. So if the thought of the working group is to continue moving forward and taking input, and adjustments can be made along the way, but at least it's to get something on the books. So I think I would agree, Gene, that we should do something. And then with the agreement that we'll continue moving forward and taking the input from the interested people and making adjustments as you go along. And the new council, the new part of the new council are here, and they hear this. So if you want to make the motion to move this forward, well, I will second it.
Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 4311-1520.
Second, please. Motion made in.
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Let's vote, please.
Passes five to two. Councilman Blair and Councilman, or Mayor Protem Kuknia dissenting.
Item B.
Item B, approval of Amendment Number One to City Contract Number 2013-171A1 for the SunDog wastewater master plan and Phase One design project with line engineering in an amount not to exceed $193,350 wastewater fund.
Your mic.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The next item for your consideration is an amendment that would add a second CIP project, SunDog Equilization Lift Station Force Main, to the existing SunDog Truck Main Project, thus starting the centralization of wastewater treatment. Combining these two projects is financially advantageous to the wastewater collection and treatment system. Due to centralization, which council approved in March 2015, staff was able to delete the previously proposed de-watering component of that project and save $648,000. The proposed schedule is a pre-design meeting on November 30th, design completion on or before July 2016. The design is approximately 4.6% of the construction cost, which is estimated at 2.26 million. Funding is available through the wastewater fund, and with that said, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Charlie.
Mayor, thank you, and Charles, thanks for the presentation. This is yet another step in moving towards centralization, which, based on all of the estimates that we've seen and the feedback from our staff, is a long-term strategy for the city that we need to undertake. So I'm glad to see this moving forward. I'm glad that we're getting it behind us so that we can take that next step and move towards centralization. Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor, I think this also solves some problems that we've had in the past where we worry about a massive kind of storm water flow that comes into SunDog. This will give us a little bit more ability to absorb those kind of things. You know, there's something that your guys said. Early on in our term, Charlie and I visited the wastewater treatment plant, and the guy said something that I never even really considered. There's no valve to shut this thing off if things get full, and you don't want the stuff that comes out of that pipe to go overflowing into the creeks, into the lake. So this is a great project. It moves us forward to centralization, but it also gets us more prepared in case of extreme weather events. So I support it 100%.
Yeah, the comments, council. Public?
Mayor?
Charlie.
Move to approve Amendment Number One to City Contract Number 2013-171A1 for the SunDog wastewater master plan and Phase One design project to line engineering in an amount not to exceed $193,350.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay. Item C.
Item C, approval of, one, acceptance of an Arizona Department of Transportation funding grant in the amount of $193,500. Two, award of City Contract Number 2015-207 for navigational aids improvements at the Prescott Municipal Airport to Rural Electric Incorporated in the amount of $178,865.55. Three, authorization of Services Number 10 for construction phase services by Dibble Engineering in an amount not to exceed $15,000. City Contract Number 2014-029A9. And four, night work for the navigational aids project. ADOT grant 90% and general fund city match 10%.
John, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor, honorable members of council. Yeah, this project was really identified by both the FAA, Federal Aviation Administration, and the Arizona Department of Transportation as a high priority due to the safety component involved in this project. Most of the current navigational aids, which I'll describe later, have exceeded their useful lives. They're becoming obsolete, and they're very difficult to maintain. This grant for this project is 90% ADOT share, so it's $193,500. The local 10% match, if you will, is $21,500 for a total project of $215,000 to replace these pieces of equipment. Specifically, the pieces of equipment are what we call a PAPI, a precision approach path indicator, and that is really a visual aid that is used 24 hours in good weather and bad for the pilots, all pilots, general aviation, corporate pilots, military, to be able to have a location identified in the air, even if it's five miles out from the airport, that will line them up in an approach path, if you will, for landing. The other piece of equipment is a REAL, runway and identifier lights, and that's really necessary in inadvertent weather and nighttime that identifies the end of the runway because we don't want the pilots to slide off of the pavement, so to speak. So both of those components are, we have some existing equipment, again, that is obsolete, so this is really to replace those items. With the council's indulgence, I'd like to identify each one of the separate four action items in more description here. The first thing that we had mentioned was the ADOT grant, $193,500. That was issued to us recently. ADOT had hoped that we were going to have the invitation for bid phase completed by this time, which we have, and they have reviewed both the invitation for bid phase and the Construction Administration potential award to Dibble Engineering and have approved those pending city council action. The second item is to award the contract number 2015207 to Rural Electric Incorporated. If the council was aware that the council recently approved in July an award to Rural Electric for a major electrical upgrade out at the airport, which they're working on right now, I think that was one of the biggest benefit for Rural Electric to bid on this project, specifically since they're already out there. They're already mobilized, and they're in place, and they have installed these pieces of equipment before, which is really what we are soliciting for the electrical contractors for. The actual bid did come in from Rural Electric, which was the sole bidder. We did have several people that were present for the actual pre-bid, if you will. Once they recognized, of course, that Rural Electric was already on the field, the economies of scale, they didn't feel that it was in their purview to proceed with the invitation or the bid phase. So Rural Electric is going to perform approximately 67% of this total contract cost with its own resources, and they're actually identified as a small business enterprise through the city of Phoenix. The third action item is Construction Administration. What we want to ensure is that, the staff wants to ensure that the project is actually installed per the design phase that was also funded by the state and 10% matched by the city. We have finished the negotiation with Dibble Engineering. The actual total Construction Administration cost is just under $15,000. If you will, work the math, it's less than 7% of the total project. And finally, specific to city code title 5-4-2 is in regards to the night work. The existing electrical project that Rural Electric is performing at the airport, some of those components are night work right now. We just figure economies of scale, certainly that Rural has determined. If they were allowed to do the night work at the same time in which they're doing some existing night work, they could, you know, certainly have both of those projects addressed in a timely manner. So the city standard construction contract with supplemental provisions by ADOT will be utilized, and per the procurement regulations through ADOT, a warranty period of one year for this equipment. However, this equipment, some of the equipment is LED, and we expect a useful life well in excess of 15 years for this, for these products. So I'll be happy to answer any questions, if anybody has any.
Steve.
Real quick, we've been discussing enlarging our capacity for slurry bombers and enlarging our capacity for our runway. What we're doing today, has that been contemplated in the length of the new runway and the lighting system, or is that all going to have to be re-engineered in the future?
It will be necessary to be re-engineered. However, this equipment is mobile. It can be relocated to a different location on the airfield, if you will. So even though it will be, you know, fixed in concrete, it's on some brackets that you can remove that and actually relocate the equipment.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's partially what I was going to ask, John. Even though we're able to, we could be pretty much assured that we're going to reuse this for any change or expansion, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I also had another question. Is this something that we are needing to do regardless of any possible future plans to the airport?
Councilmember Luzzell, I'd like to answer yes, and specifically because the Federal Aviation Administration and ADOT already identified this as one of the highest priority needs, and it also, these components will be utilized for all the services, not only the Forest Service, but like I said, the military.
Emmery Riddle.
Yes, sir. All of the training opportunities, all the training schools that are out at the airport, as well as general aviation.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Gene.
I have one for Mr. Palladini, so he doesn't fall asleep. Okay. In the contract, the grant agreement, general provisions, we have that nasty indemnification clause. Will the risk pool cover us in the event we are required as a city to indemnify ADOT?
It depends on the reason for the indemnification. Generally speaking, if we are required to defend and indemnify ADOT or the state for actions of our employees, then the answer is generally yes. That's covered under our insurance. If we have to indemnify, which is sort of unfortunate, but ADOT's sort of hard-nosed about it, indemnify for things for which we have no control over, then as a general rule, the insurer or the Southwest Risk won't cover indemnifying or the city's indemnification of acts of others, especially if they're acts of the ADOT folks.
So in your opinion, is the degree of risk of the latter happening?
We have control of, yeah, and these, I mean, I hate to say yes, but we have control over this project. It's, and in terms, all the way from the engineer to the contractor to, you know, it's our facility. Where these become problematic is where ADOT hires the engineer, hires the contractor, turns it over to the city, and then says, whatever happens, it's your fault or your responsibility, where we have no control of the process when they're building something. So it really is sort of a risk benefit analysis in these kinds of situations.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, I'm just going to be a Chatty Cathy. It's my last time. You know, these lights are so old that are out there, and just in, you know, 20 years, the way lighting technologies come around, it's just amazing how much they last, how much brighter they are, how much better they work. And, you know, this is just an investment in Prescott. We've identified the airport as a place to put our money and grow it bigger, and for $21,000, we're getting almost $200,000 worth of work. And yeah, it's a grant from ADOT, but that's our money, too. You know, it ought to come back. We're all citizens of Arizona. And we're really, there's so much going on out at the airport between Emory Riddle, Forest Service, and last Thursday, we got to see some of the efforts come to light. Was out there at the airport, they've added a third fueling port for the slurry bombers that operate around Prescott, and I think everybody understands how essential that is, and now instead of just filling up two, they can fill up three. So this is an investment in Prescott. I think we ought to move forward with it.
Anyone else? Comments from the public? Is that a yes? Okay, Dan, thank you. Do you have a motion?
Mayor, move to accept the Arizona Department of Transportation 90% grant, funding grant in the amount of $193,500. Two, award City Contract Number 2015-207 to Rural Electric Incorporated in the amount of $178,865.55. Three, approve authorization of Services Number 10 for construction phase services by Dibble Engineering in an amount not to exceed $15,000. City Contract Number 2014-029A9. And four, approve night work for the navigational aids project.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay. Adam D.
Item D, approval of purchase of one each 2016 Ford F-550 Super Cab 4x4 utility truck with 7,500-pound crane body from Burge Ford using Pima County Contract Number B508299-BC pricing in the total amount of $111,691.80. City Contract Number 2016-102 Water Fund.
Stephanie.
Mayor and council, good afternoon. The Utilities Division has operated vehicle number 960 almost daily for the past 15 years. This vehicle is equipped with a 6,000-pound crane, a utility body, and an air compressor, and it is primarily used by crews for specialized tasks requiring heavy lifting when performing hydrant repairs and replacements, or performing water main taps and replacing water valves and things like that. On October 12, 2015, the existing truck suffered a complete engine failure, and due to the age of the vehicle and its high mileage, replacing the vehicle is not recommended at this time. Utilities employees are currently utilizing a temporary truck and a backhoe as a crane to complete their daily work. The temporary truck is not sized to fit all of the equipment that the crew needs in the field, and utilizing a backhoe is inefficient and less safe. Also, utilizing a backhoe as a crane on job sites increases travel time to the site and in some cases requires additional personnel to be on that site for the work to be performed. The truck we are requesting is available for immediate delivery. If we were to have a truck built, it would be at least a six-to-eight-month wait time for that vehicle to come in. Funding is available in the FY16 Water Fund, and if you have questions, I'll be happy to answer them at this time.
Counsel?
I just have a comment. Stephanie, did you get with the chief of police? Maybe you can use his new vehicle that he's getting.
That new tactical vehicle.
Comments from the public? If not, we need a motion.
Mayor Protem, move to approve City Contract Number 2016-102.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, push your button.
Passes six to zero. Mayor Kirkendall absent, excuse.
Thank you.
Okay, what's the next item, Dana?
Item E, approval of an application to the Law Enforcement Support Office of the Defense Logistics Agency pursuant to the National Defense Authorization Act of 1997 for acquisition of an armored tactical rescue vehicle for the police department.
Mr. Brambilla.
Mayor Protem and council, thank you very much. John Brambilla, Lieutenant with the Police Department. What you have before you today is a request for us to apply to the Federal 1033 program. I have a real short PowerPoint, and then happy to answer any questions that you have.
Can you explain? Can you explain that 1033 program?
I can, yes, sir.
Yep.
I will. The 1033 program is through the Defense Logistics Agency. They dispose of excess property received from military services, so the Department of Defense. Their inventory changes daily, they have everything available from air conditioners up to vehicles, weaponry and more. Property is first offered for reutilization through the military and the Department of Defense. It's then either transferred to federal agencies or donated to state and local governments for no charge. The Law Enforcement Support Office is where we would apply to through the Act of the National Defense Authorization Act of 1997. This act is basically the federal code. You see there Section 1033, that's what they refer to the federal 1033 program. Requisitions cover, like I said, every supply that is possible that the military uses, that includes vehicles and weapons and you can see that only about 5% of the requests are actually for weapons or 1% for tactical vehicles. Currently, the Prescott Police Department SWAT team, which I have responsibility to oversee, is using two armored personnel carriers. Both of these have been acquired through the 1033 program, the Peacekeeper there on our left and the Mamba on the right. The Peacekeeper was acquired from the Las Vegas Metro SWAT Department in 2009 through the 1033 program. At best, we can tell that it's probably an early 1980s model built on a Dodge chassis with a gas engine. Ballistic protection up to 223, which is the rifles that we carry in our police department. It's possible it can carry up to six SWAT members inside. We outfitted it with rails on the outside for a little bit more rapid deployment on scenes where we need to get there a little bit quicker. We spent a lot of time outfitting it with the equipment and a lot of that we did in-house and with the help of Fleet Services to get it to where we could use it on calls. Mechanically, it's been very unreliable for us. I literally, every time we have to use it, I'm concerned that it's even going to start or make it to the call. It is broke down on calls, it's broken down on the way to calls. Unfortunately, it's been towed back to the city yard more times than I think we've driven it. We've made it work because it's what we have and that's what's available to us, but that's a very real concern that I have, that we don't have a reliable vehicle to get us to situations that require our SWAT team. It's not capable of traveling long distances without issues. I think we can get it up to about 25 miles per hour before we start having issues with it. There are rollover concerns because of the weight and it overheats on us on a pretty regular basis as well. The other tactical vehicle that we have currently, the Mamba, we acquired it in 2012 again through the 1033 program. This is an early 2000s model, South African, right side drive built armored personnel carrier that's on a Unimog type chassis. Ballistic protection is about the same as the Peacekeeper 556 or 223. The difference in this is that this one is actually blast protected, up to seven pounds of TNT and the MRAP acronym you see there is Mind Resistant Ambush Protected Vehicle. This were the early MRAPs and we have seen across even in the United States, the use of improvised explosive devices and things of that nature. This feature would protect the members that are inside. We can carry up to 10 SWAT members inside this vehicle. Again, it was in very, very poor condition when we obtained it. We spent a lot of time and money outfitting it, a lot of donations from different businesses and Yavapai College just to get it to where we could make it operational for us. Again, a lot of work by Fleet Services. Because it is a South African made and the company is no longer in business, parts are just not available. It did break down on us also on a call and it was down for approximately six to seven months as we tried to locate parts for a South African made vehicle that's no longer manufactured. I believe we found them in Germany. And then to get somebody to work on the specialized parts, nobody in the state of Arizona, we had to look to Illinois and found someone there that was very familiar with the Mamba and was able to fix it and get it back up and running for us. Our mechanics at Fleet have a real difficult time working on it. The vehicle that we're requesting is an MRAP. It's available currently through the 1033 program. If we were to be approved to submit our application, the waiting list is approximately 400 agencies ahead of ours. We're fortunate in that in Arizona, there is one available and because it's in Arizona, our state coordinator, who is a sergeant from Payson, would be able to transfer that to us immediately if we're approved to apply for it. Minimal cost to transport it, we'd be able to drive it back from, it's currently located in Pine Top, Arizona, we'd be able to drive it back. So the costs, again, to transfer it from the federal government to us, there is no cost to the city. We would need to outfit it with emergency equipment, some lights, a personal address system or a PA system, sirens, things of that nature and it would need a little bit of work. It's been sitting for a couple of months up in Pine Top. I've discussed it with our Fleet Services, they can support this type of a vehicle because it's built on an international Navistar Caterpillar chassis. So the parts are readily available. I think our Empire dealer here, even talking with Justin Hill down at the city garage, some of the parts we need, they already have in stock there. They could maintain this vehicle for us. Parts would be readily available and it'd be much easier for us if it broke down, if we had any issues with it. The ballistic protection on it is up to 20 millimeter armor piercing. Those are anti-tank rounds, there's not too much that we're going to see that's going to be able to penetrate that. This is one of those pieces of equipment that we only need it when we need it. It doesn't get used all that often, but we do live in a time where things like this are needed to keep our citizens safe as well as our officers so that they can deal with situations. In this past year, we had a situation where we were dealing with an individual who was armed with something that would have gone right through any of the armor that we had. Again, it does also blast protected, 15 pounds of TNT. We can carry up to 11 SWAT members, this is the majority of our team that we could deploy to a scene quickly inside of a vehicle that would keep them safe. It's in very good condition, only has around 5,000 miles. It's a high profile, I believe it has 14 inches of clearance with 4x4 capabilities. So that would be a plus and obviously the terrain and the area that we live in. The life expectancy on this vehicle, because of the infrequent use, 15 to 20 years, I believe we could get out of it. It requires maybe one full service a year from our city garage and they informed me that that would be about a $500 service, that just once a year, we'd have to change out all the fluids and the oil and things of that nature. Our plan would be then to replace the Peacekeeper because that is the least reliable vehicle that we have. We would return that to the 1033 program and replace it with this MRAP. That is a picture of the MRAP as it sits in Pine Top, Arizona. Just another view and then the back. The stairs are actually the door to the back and that's all on hydraulics and electric connections that it opens and closes. Across the country, there's been over 25 incidents where MRAPs have been used by SWAT teams and fired on by suspects. No casualties to officers, no casualties to innocent civilians in the area. They've been used in operations during severe flooding because of the high clearance, we could get through flooded areas with this thing if we had to do some type of rescue operations in areas that were flooded. And then in many cases, when a vehicle like this shows up, a lot of suspects just don't want to deal with it and they surrender, which is what we want, is for things to end peacefully. They do offer through the DRMO, a program called Success Stories and these are just some from across the country. The lower left one there, the white MRAP that was Polk County, Florida, I actually sat through the debrief on that. That vehicle was shot at 14 times by a suspect. It was also blown up with improvised explosive devices. They were able to drive it back to the shop with no issues whatsoever and everyone inside of it was safe and protected. The ballistic glass on there will take multiple hits and again, just to keep our officers safe and any citizens that we had to do rescues on would be completely safe inside that vehicle. And I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Charlie.
Mayor, thank you and Lieutenant, thank you for making the presentation. About a year and a half ago, you and I had an opportunity to take a look at the existing vehicles and there's no doubt that for a long time, the SWAT team has dealt with what they had to work with. The Peacekeeper is a rolling disaster. I know that Fleet Services has tried very hard, but you can't fix something that's just that worn out. Obviously with this program, it's very cost effective for us and it's going to serve you all for your needs, so I'm very supportive of it. I'm glad that it's come forward as our last item for today and something that I look forward to seeing when it does arrive.
Thank you, sir.
Rather than get rid of the Peacekeeper, Lamerson can use that as a duck blind, I think.
Jean.
I have some concerns about pursuing, acquiring a vehicle like this because of what it says about our community. I thought our police department was strongly geared toward community policing and peaceful resolution. This kind of vehicle just sends the message that we're the military and it's militarizing our police force. There's a lot being said and debated and written about what happens to local police forces when you equip them with military grade equipment. So it's a serious concern. I don't want to see Prescott, everybody's hometown, become a war zone. And I'm curious about the number of times the Peacekeeper and the Mamba have actually been used, deployed and for what purpose, what kind of circumstance warranted their use?
And absolutely, I would share your concern and the mission of our police department is community based. I was born and raised here, I've lived in Prescott for 42 years and I understand Prescott and I want to keep Prescott safe. There are situations where we do need vehicles like this to keep our officers safe, to keep our citizens safe. As far as the uses, it varies depending on the year, no more than probably activation of our tactical team or our SWAT team, Special Weapons and Tactics. Some years it's 12 times, some years it's six times, some years it's 15 times. It really just kind of varies on the situations. We are very mindful of what we use our SWAT team for. We are not a military force, we do not employ military tactics. This just happens to be a vehicle that the military no longer needs. We can reutilize that in a different way. They do have companies that purposely build armored tactical vehicles for SWAT teams at a price tag of close to $400,000. So those vehicles are out there. This is a defensive type of a vehicle to keep our officers safe and like I said, we only need it when we need it. And we, like I said, when we have an issue that comes up or a situation that we may use our SWAT team, it is criticized and it's looked over by me, Deputy Chief Reinhardt and Chief Monahan before we ever deploy our SWAT team. We want to do it in the right way and there are unfortunately situations where we need a unit that is better trained and better equipped than our normal patrol force. But our day-to-day operations within the city, absolutely, community based policing is our number one goal.
Can you paint flowers on it?
Yes, sir.
Chris, you had something.
Can they be green?
I think with this vehicle, you might even have less visibility because as we deploy the trucks we got now, they have high public visibility because they're on the side of the road waiting for the tow truck. You know, this one would actually be able to get there and get back.
That's true.
Gina and myself both received a letter from Ralph Hess, who shows up a lot here at these meetings and he was worried about the militarization of our police force and I have to reject that. You know, when the military goes out, they got rifles, they got grenades, they have everything they need to go out and kill people and do the job that they got to do. I mean, our guys are going out with tasers, you're going out with less than lethal weapons and usually that's probably the first choice unless somebody charges at you like has happened here in Prescott. There's no weapons on this truck.
No, sir.
You know, this is just strictly an armored box that can get put in between our cops and the guy who maybe barricaded himself in the house, which has happened here. And when I was reviewing this, I kept going back to the North Hollywood Bank robbery that you can see on YouTube and I don't know if anybody else has seen it, but basically these guys covered themselves head to toe in Kevlar, came out of a bank with weapons that they made fully automatic and basically walked around with cops bullets bouncing off of them, shooting at the police. I mean, it was tragic until they could finally, I think they broke into a, or got to an arm store and got a rifle that could actually shoot these guys. You're not going to take this out when you don't need it and all it is, is something between the bullets and our guys that are going out there to do it. You know, if you think this isn't necessary, next time there is an incident, put yourself in their position. Do you want to walk up to that front door of the guy that's barricaded himself in with maybe his family in danger? Do you want to do that? No, I'd rather have something around me that keeps me safe, that gets me back home to my family after taking care of your family. So I'm going to fully support this.
Thank you.
I might just mention that you're aware that tonight is, Chris and Charlie, is my last night, but Chris is auditioning for a comedian role. So the applause was proper and could have been a little greater, but you're going to be okay?
You're either laughing or you're crying in this business, Mayor.
Okay. Well said, thank you. Comments from the public? Number one.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Counsel. My name is Sandra Smith, I'm at 701 White's Bar. Having done EMS for many years, the scariest calls I ever got were officer down calls. Those things sent shivers up my spine like crazy and I did a lot of nasty calls. So I'm glad to see this because I understand from a military's perspective, from a police perspective, what this is really about. It's about protecting the officers who are protecting us and they put their lives on the line every single day to do that, every hour of the day that they're on duty and sometimes when they're off. So I fully approve of this.
Thanks for your comments.
Steve.
Steve Silvernail, 820 Sheldon. Hey, look, I'm taller than somebody. Surprise. Yeah, who knew? Jean, you're not nuts. I also am concerned about militarization of our police force. They're here to protect and to serve. I don't see that on vehicles anymore when I look at police vehicles. However, all right, so having said that, yeah, we want our police officers to come home safe. This is a great deal for us. Having served with the DLA for a long, long time, about 20 years, I'll take anything they can get. I think we ought to expand our shopping list, so let's, I think we should do this.
Thanks, Steve. Next.
My name's Carlos Lopez Reis, I'm a veteran of the proud United States of America and I think what this gentleman is trying to implement was awesome. I think it's beautiful. It's not military standards because if you're in the military, that's not military standard. You can't implement law enforcement to military. So if you're looking for the military to the state, you need to look what you're talking about. That is not military. It was derogative, a private military thing, but law enforcement is not pushing for military standards. I was in the military, that's not military standards.
Okay.
And awesome.
We got it. Thanks for your comments.
Thank you. Am I done?
That's it.
Oh, man, how many more seconds do I have? Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Counsel. My name's Max Pettit. I'm a combat veteran from Afghanistan and Iraq. I was also a SWAT team member. Received my SWAT training way back in the 80s when our primary tactic was covert entry into the building, not flashbangs and blowing shit up, excuse me, pardon my language here. But we weren't doing dynamic entries at that time. I track a lot of the things that are going along in the country and one of the things that I hear from law enforcement constantly is, what if? Well, what if the world stops turning on its axis right now and we all fly off into space? Part of this is allowable risk. How often you use it, what are you going to use it for and then what comes with it? An important part that I've experienced personally, unfortunately having found myself in a position of training law enforcement officers and SWAT in a position of training law enforcement officers in SWAT tactics way back in the 80s, was the mindset that doesn't necessarily have it right now, but it develops over time. Because part of it is, if we have cool stuff, we want to use that cool stuff. We don't want it to sit in the motor pool. We don't want to sit it in the arms locker. We want to take that stuff out and we want to go play with it. So, the next thing you see is body armor on the outside, tactical holsters. Everybody wants to be, you know, kicking indoors in Iraq or Afghanistan. And that's not the situation here. What I would ask you to consider is not what you have necessarily right now, but what is that going to become? And how are you going to prevent that? How are you going to work against that mindset, that slow mission creep that we've seen that happens with not only federal agencies, like the Department of Homeland Security, but with many law enforcement agencies, when they start looking towards, "Well, we got this now. What else can we get from the 1033 program? What other firearms? What other weapon systems?" MRAP is a weapon system. That's how it's considered in the military. It's not just a vehicle that gets people from point A to point B. The other thing that we hear about frequently is, "We're going to use it to rescue people." And many agencies put rescue on the side of their MRAP or whatever armored vehicle they have. When's the last time you rescued somebody? You're going to put a vehicle that has 11 slots in it. What are you rescuing? Kittens out of trees? I mean, why do you need this? And what is it telling the community? The next thing and the last thing, comment that I have to make, is whenever we have a dog-and-pony show for the law enforcement people, they always want to cart these things out. Look what we got. We got our armor, we got our firearms, we got our big truck. Oh, by the way, we can put a 50-cal on this, or we can put a sniper rifle on it. And that's what they're selling to the public. That's the image that goes to the public. Thank you, gentlemen, for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Mayor, if I could, I would just indicate from my four years of experience with our police department, that is not the way the Prescott Police Department and our SWAT team operates. Our two vehicles are ancient. We're looking for something practical, and I've got full faith and confidence in our lieutenant in charge of SWAT that they're going to use it when it needs to be used and only when it needs to be used.
Well said.
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning, Councilpeople. My name is Laurie Jacobs, and I concur with the need for a vehicle such as this. I'm a retired lieutenant from the Phoenix Police Department with 34 years of service. And in 1995, I responded to a sniper call on North 20th Street in Highland. We already had three citizens down, a bicyclist, we had a mailman, and another pedestrian walking in the area. Our first responder's name was Officer Lenny Colagi. He responded, he got within two houses of the house. He also was seriously wounded and shot, and he was stranded in his car. I was the first lieutenant that responded on that scene. We had no way of getting any help to either one of these four people, and there was an active sniper at the time. We finally, it took an hour, to commandeer a armored vehicle that was in the area, which we did, and we finally were able to go and rescue those four individuals while they were taking shots. What ultimately happened is three of those individuals died, including Officer Lenny Colagi. So, when you stop and think about community and how it reflects the community-based policing, there are times when you may have a sniper in the near future in this area, and if somebody is down, you have to consider how you're going to be able to rescue those individuals. If you're concerned with the way it's going to appear, I'm sure that the good lieutenant here who's put this presentation together can create policies, and I think I heard him say that this isn't something that is routinely going to be brought out, but the rescue concept alone is something which warrants having a vehicle available such as this in order to accommodate helping the citizens and the officers that are going to be out there and making sure that they're safe. So, I would strongly encourage you to vote yes for this.
Thanks for your comments. We're going to move along now. This council is already 15 minutes overtime. We expected to be out of here at 4:00. So, I think we've heard enough for the council to make a decision. Real quick.
Dennis Duval, Prescott, also a veteran, member of Prescott Veterans for Peace. Now, what's not being talked about here is there needs to be some community discussion about this. When Sandra McCain was here, the last time he was here, right up here in this city hall, and you were here, Mayor, what he said was that this militarization of our local law enforcement is an important issue that should be discussed at the community level and encouraged you, as I took it, to initiate this conversation in our community. Well, you didn't, and there hasn't been that discussion, and there should be. So, I would urge you to table this, bring it up at a work session, at a workshop, and let the public have at it, talk about how they feel about the militarization of our local law enforcement. The line between our local police force and the military is getting blurrier and blurrier. And we want some answers to a lot of questions, and so I would really urge you to table this. As you can see, there's a lot of interest in the community about how much military equipment we want to acquire. So, please have a work session on this and let us talk about it. Thanks.
Okay, we can let the council discuss it. Chris?
No, Mayor, I'm just ready.
I thought you were on there.
Yeah, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
Move to approve submission of an application to the Law Enforcement Support Office of the Defense Logistics Agency for acquisition of an armored tactical rescue vehicle for use by the police department.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, vote please.
Passes 6 to 1. Councilwoman Wilcox to send.
Okay, we're at the last part of the program. I think before we, I have no idea what presentations or how long they're going to take, but I think that the three of us that'll be leaving, and Jim, you may want to make a comment, even though you're coming right back, that we'll go ahead and do that now and then finish up with the presentations, and I would like to start the process. In my case, it's been a long six years, but it's been a very grateful six years to have the opportunity to represent this great community. The first things I would like to make, obviously, is thank my wife, Tana, for being on-call. And Jane, this is kind of what you can expect, is to be on-call. So, thank you, Tana, for six years. My two sons, Mike and Pat. Mike is fire chief over in Cottonwood. Pat is executive director of the Emploier Support of the Garden Reserve for the entire state of California, and he was able to come over today. Thank you. Harry, we're glad you stepped up to the challenge. I think the community will be in good hands. You've paid enough attention the last several months to know what's going on, so you're not coming in cold. And we're, those of us leaving and the ones staying on, and your new council, Billy, thanks for stepping up. You're going to have a good group. We're confident of that. There's a lot of things going on that are good. There's some things going on that we're having a hard time paying for, that you're aware of. But this community always comes together when it needs to, and I know that they'll come together behind you. So, thank you. Chris makes us laugh once in a while. Charlie really does his homework. Jane provides the loyal opposition many times, and we respect and appreciate that. Steve has sat behind us for several years. Greg is starting his second half and provides input that is very helpful. Jim, thank you for being our loyal soldier.
Thank you, Marlon. Thank you, Charlie. Thank you, Chris. It's been a pleasure and an honor serving with all of you. You know, Marlon, you and I go back 35 years.
You don't have to go there.
I wasn't talking about all 80 of them. I was just talking about 35 of them, okay? Yeah, it's been a great opportunity to serve, and I really appreciated Charlie stepping up. I really appreciated Chris stepping up. You guys have done a great job. I'll defer to my other council members.
Dana, thank you. We have a great team. John? Here. I understand your electric shaver broke. Yeah, there's still a safety razor, but, you know, I understand. And Craig, thanks for all of your help through the years. We do an awful lot with very few. And if you could see the paperwork or the effort work on a weekly basis of what comes out of the management team that goes down and makes things happen in the working side of it, you'd be impressed, as we have been. So, thank you.
Mayor, thank you very much, and echoing many of your comments, the last four years has been quite the roller coaster. Ran on economic development, transparency, moving our city forward, looking towards the future, taking the mindset, "Leave it better than you found it." And I think at the end of four years, we've accomplished a lot of that. In the middle of all this, we hit a tragedy that nobody could have anticipated. It was definitely one heck of a rocky road. But at the end of the day, there's 40,000 people who are the owners of Prescott. There's the seven of us who have the privilege to serve at any given time, and there's 500 and roughly nine people who, every single day of the week, are out there putting their boots on the ground to make the city operate. And a lot of times, unfortunately, they are the ones that get beat up, sometimes by us, sometimes by the public. But I will tell you, from the four years that I've been here and the tours of facilities and going out into the field, watching Vector trucks clean out lift stations, rappelling off a mountainside, riding with the police department, seeing how our departments work to make our city better, we have 509 of the greatest employees you will ever find. We get to work with department heads regularly, and a lot of times, people say that we shoot from the hip or we rush things through. Nothing in government happens overnight. That took me two and a half years to figure out, once I was sworn in. But it has been a privilege to serve with all seven members of this council, as well as the ones that were with us before. And it's time for a short sabbatical. We'll see where the world takes us, but thank you all for your support. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank my mom, who has come once a quarter to give our prayer and has been a very big supporter of mine through the whole process. And also, my fiancee is here. For those of you who have ever wondered, she does exist. She's also down here today to support me, which I greatly appreciate Elizabeth's support. But it has been a great ride, and Mayor, it's been a pleasure to work with you and this council.
Thank you.
Well, I'm not going to cry. I'm happy to get my life back, you know. You know, but Mayor, echoing some of the things you said there, you know, it's the families that do take the hit. You know, my kids were still in high school when I got in office. Asked them if I could do it ahead of time. They all said okay, and they took those hits. But, you know, there's so many things that you show up to after-hours and during-hours, and I think you even were hitting on Saturday sometimes like eight things in a day, which I never quite got that high, but it was pretty hard. It's been a huge learning experience, seeing how government works, seeing how slow government works was frustrating, but I remember one time in particular, I was really upset after a vote, and I was kind of steaming, and Councilman Lamerson says, "Hey, the vote's over. Get over it. We're on to the next thing." Something to that effect. And he's absolutely right. You know, they've been a good group of people to work with, and I'd like to say I'm going to miss it. I'll still kind of look in on it, but I'm going to go back to my garbage, garbage I understand, and have a good day. But it's been an honor, you guys. Thank you, Prescott, for letting me do this. It's been an experience I'll never forget.
Craig, where do you go from here?
Well, Mayor, I think we have some of the council members who will remain on the council. We're going to make presentations to each of those council members who are finishing
I have the honor of giving Councilman Kukneo's plaque and appreciation for sitting next to him over the past two years. We haven't always agreed, things that maybe folks at home don't hear us knocking each other, but we had a good run, and most people don't even know the pranks I've pulled on them over the years. So, I'm going to miss that. I don't know who's going to be sitting next to me, so I don't know if it's going to be conducive then. But I was going to go into a long, long-winded appreciation speech, but you've already heard enough from Chris today, so. Thank you, Chris.
I'm just going to stand right back here so I can be next to Charlie. It's been my privilege to sit next to Charlie for the last two years, and I'm really going to miss him because he would always talk to me, he would always listen to me, and he would agree to put something on the agenda. It takes two council people to put something on the agenda, and he would agree to put it on the agenda even though he didn't ultimately agree with what I wanted to do. But most of all, Charlie studies things very carefully. He's a very intelligent person, and he is a master of compromise. He really is a good politician. So, I hope he comes back in some other form, in some other venue, possibly, possibly the city of Prescott again. I don't know. But I really want to thank Charlie, and I hope all of you do too. Thank you.
This is for the mayor. It'll be tough, but... Give me a moment. I'm the baller on the council. It was tough. I thought this morning, I'm laying in bed thinking about 2:00. Couldn't decide whether to get up and go to the bathroom or whether I was worried about...
Thanks for keeping me in mind.
It was really tough. I was thinking about, gosh, today, are you worried about your annual physical today? That always has me concerned. Not one that likes doctors. Then I start thinking about, you know, six years of your red truck being at the city hall parking lot. I'm not going to worry about you. I'm worried about what Tana's going to do with you at home. That's what I'm worried about. So, Tan, I hope you find something to do with Marlon. Here's this beautiful plaque, and while I was sitting here polishing it, I noticed that the screws loose. And then I realized that we're kind of short-funded, so we didn't have the tools to tighten them all.
And today, we're also honored to have the diplomatic service consuls from the countries of El Salvador, Germany, and Mexico, who would like to make a presentation to the mayor. And to coordinate that presentation, I'd like to introduce the Honorable Enrique Melendez.
I'm going to reorder the agenda just a little bit, if I might. My name is Bob Grenjer, and I'm on the Board of Directors of Sister Cities International. And I'm here today to welcome these gentlemen, which I'll do just shortly. Mr. Mayor... Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, and residents of Prescott. Today's a special day for us. It's kind of a bittersweet day as we lose some important supporters of our program, the Sister Cities program. But we're confident with the new administration coming in and the new council members to be seated, that we'll be in good hands once again. On behalf of the Sister City members, I'd like to express my gratitude to all of you, all the council members, and especially to Mayor Kirkendall for the support he's given us over the years. As you know, many of you know, we have a, have had a proud Sister City relationship with Comorcas and Nora, Mexico. This year was our forty-third anniversary of that relationship. We now have completed eight years of a relationship with Suchitoto, El Salvador, and we have just completed our third important year with the city of Zeitz, Germany, where we have essentially a fantastic youth program. And we're very pleased that Chris Kuknio will be taking over the leadership of that organization for us come January. Your support, council members and mayor, has contributed greatly to our success. And for that, all members of the Sister City program of Prescott, thank you. Additionally, and perhaps more importantly, support by government officials of the three countries that we represent has also contributed to our success, which has been very robust, productive, and recognized among the best in all of Sister Cities International. Our small community of Prescott has been honored several times for our programs and we appreciate the support the city has given us. Today, your contribution to the success of our program is recognized by the presence of the three distinguished gentlemen sitting here, the representatives of the governments of the countries to which we are affiliated. With that, now allow me to introduce the Honorable Enrique Melendez, Honorary Counsel of El Salvador.
Good afternoon, Mayor Kirkendall, Mayor Protem Kuknio, council members and staff. I'm privileged this afternoon, Mayor and council, to be joined by the Honorable Helgi Jordan, Counsel of Germany. And to my left, Jose Antonio Awayo, the Counsel of Mexico, who will be making brief remarks as appropriate when we present this award to you. You know, Mayor, six years ago, I sat behind this podium, I don't know if you remember this, and I asked you, I said, during your term, would you please provide us with a very important word that's seldom used in the dictionary anymore in society? It's called respect. And before I finished my sentence, you stopped me and you said, sir, you have my word. And you kept that word, Mayor, so the respect from all the people in El Salvador comes back to you, sir. The Sister City program, any Sister City program requires a lot of devotion and an awful lot of effort and an awful lot of heart. And if it wasn't for the heart that Councilmember Jim Lamerson and Steve Blair gave us nine years ago, we wouldn't have a Sister City in El Salvador. So I wanna thank you both and City Manager Craig McConnell for the support all of you have given us. And at the same time, I point a personal privilege to congratulate the new mayor and two council members who will be joining the city council and continuing to lead the city of Prescott to the level of excellence. Now, I'm gonna introduce Jose Antonio Awayo.
Thank you very much, counsel. Thank you very much, Mr. Kirkendall. On behalf of the Counsel General of Mexico, Ambassador Roberto Rodriguez Hernandez, I thank the invitation. The Governor of Mexico is present to honor you, who you are very close to our country. The relationship of Mexico with the city of Prescott has considerably increased during the last two years. This is thanks for, thanks to you, Mayor, and your team. And the intention has been to establish and to make stronger our alliances of collaboration in order to link the Mexican community with the local authorities, especially with law enforcement, provide support to help to build trust, establish young strategies to approach the Mexican community in Prescott, gently educate the community about their rights, obligations, and to respect the law, increase the opportunities to develop trade, investment, tourism, and cultural heritage. I wish you good luck, Mayor, and we are sure that you will enjoy living in Rocky Pine. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Enrique. Honorable Mayor Kirkendall, Honorable Chris Kuknio, Mayor Protem, Honorable Councilmembers, staff, and the residents of Prescott. I am sending you the best wishes from the German community here in Arizona. We're very happy that the Sister City partnership with Zeitz is flourishing and growing, especially the youth program is coming to new strides and we're very happy about that. As you remember, the German reunification is like twenty-five years ago now and it's unbelievable that so much time gone. And the North Zeitz is in East Germany and a lot of the inhabitants have not enjoyed freedom for a long time. It's a great privilege for me to be here today and see democracy in action in a city council where the members of the community can actually speak up and have a say in it. I always remember the words of President Reagan saying that freedom is never more than one generation away from extinction. And I think seeing democracy in action and bringing it as a friendship to the people of Zeitz and extending your friendship is a great sign of what America is about and the American people. So I'd like to thank you for it personally, thanks to the city council and everybody who is living in this community. Thank you.
Mayor, would you step up so we can present this award to you?
You wanna read it? Yes, please.
So the text is Marlin Kirkendall, the countries of Mexico, Germany, and El Salvador acknowledge and appreciate the support and respect that Mayor Marlin Kirkendall has provided during his six years as Mayor of the city of Prescott. With the due to his leadership, Roberto Rodriguez, Counsel General of Mexico, Enrique Melendez, Honorary Counsel of El Salvador, Helgi Jordan, Honorary Counsel of Germany.
That's it, Mayor.
Ladies and gentlemen, your last shot at the apple. The meeting's adjourned.
I'd like to start by announcing that Councilman Siska was unable to attend today's meeting, so he was administered his oath of office on Friday, November 20th, with the effective date of his term beginning today. And now we'd like to swear in the newly elected officers. Each new officer will be administered the oath of office separately. And I'd like to start with Mayor-elect Oberg. So Mr. Oberg, would you and your wife please come forward? So please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Harry Oberg...
I, Harry Oberg...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
And the Constitution and laws...
And the Constitution and laws...
Of the state of Arizona...
Of the state of Arizona...
That I will bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith...
And allegiance to the same...
And allegiance to the same...
And defend them against all enemies...
And defend them against all enemies...
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic...
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
And impartially...
And impartially...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties...
Of the office of...
Of the office of...
Prescott City Mayor...
Prescott City Mayor...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my abilities...
So help me God...
So help me God.
Now I'd like to introduce Yavapai County Attorney Sheila Polk. Ms. Polk was elected in November of 2000 as the Yavapai County Attorney and is the first woman to hold that office. She is currently serving her fourth, four-year term as Yavapai County Attorney and we are honored to have her here today to administer the oath of office, Councilwoman-elect Billy Orr, and to Councilman Lamerson. So Ms. Polk, if you could come forward.
Will you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I state your name...
I, Billy Orr...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
And the Constitution and laws...
And the Constitution and laws...
Of the state of Arizona...
Of the state of Arizona...
That I will bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith...
And allegiance to the same...
And allegiance to the same...
And defend them against all enemies...
And defend them against all enemies...
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic...
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties...
Of the office...
Of the office...
Of Prescott City Councilwoman...
Of Prescott City Councilwoman...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability...
So help me God...
So help me God...
And will you please sign the oath?
I will, thank you. Thank you.
You're the best. I'm with you. Can you now get to take your place at the...
Yes.
Thank you very much. Will you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I state your name...
I, Jim Lamerson...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
And the Constitution and laws...
And the Constitution and laws...
Of the state of Arizona...
Of the state of Arizona...
That I will bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith...
And allegiance to the same...
And allegiance to the same...
And defend them against all enemies...
And defend them against all enemies...
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic...
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties...
Of the office...
Of the office...
Of Prescott City Councilman...
Of Prescott City Councilman...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability...
So help me God...
So help me God.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Mayor Oberg... Councilman Blair...
Here.
Councilman Lamerson...
Here.
Councilman Lozelle...
Here.
Councilwoman Orr...
Here.
Councilman Siska is absent, excused. Councilwoman Wilcox...
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, I'd like to call forward Jack, Pastor Jack Shannon of the American Lutheran Church. They happen to be in my family church. He'll give us our invocation.
Well, that's frightening. You know what an honor and what a privilege it is for those of us in the clergy to be able to open these council meetings with prayer. It says a lot about Prescott and I wanna thank you for that opportunity. Gracious God, you are indeed the giver of all good gifts and we thank you today for all your blessings. We ask that you would continue to bless those who hold elected office, bless them with an abundance of wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. We ask that you would be with our mayor and our city council in all their deliberations and that you would help them to be wise in the decisions that they will be making for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in their leadership. Good Lord, give them insight to lead with integrity, that their decisions may reflect what is right and what is good, and keep us from shortsightedness and pettiness. Grant us the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and say. All glory be to you, loving God, now and always, through Christ and the Holy Spirit, forever and ever. Amen.
At this point, I'd like to take a couple of minutes and just have the people that were recently installed to make comments or statements if they wish to. I'll go ahead and start it out and then I'll have Councilwoman Orr go ahead and make comments if you wish, and then followed by Councilman Jim Lamerson. I wanna thank everybody who took time out of the day to come here to see this transition of our local government to a new mayor and council. I hope everybody had a chance to get some cake out there. I tested it myself, it was very good. Now, I know some people just left there, so there might not be any left when you go back out there later on if you wanna get some. But hopefully, there's some there if you haven't had a chance to get some. Also, I wanna thank Mayor Kirkendall and the previous council, in particular, Councilman Lamerson, Kuknio, and Arnold for their service on this committee or this council. And I think it's been very important for this town with the work that they have done throughout their entire terms of service. Some of them was only one term, some was several terms, and we had one man just come back for even more. So, thank you for that. I appreciate that. Mayor Kirkendall, sometime back told me that particularly after the August election, that, you know, there was gonna be some significant things we're gonna have to do in the budget in 2016 and 2017. And he was gonna work diligently to try and help us get through 2016 and leave the work of this council in the near term, basically January through June, to work on 2017. And so I commend him for his efforts and the council's efforts in getting that, and also the city staff and all the hard work they did in trying to come up with some options to try and take care of 2016. to try and take care of 2016. Obviously, we have a lot of issues facing Prescott, among which will be seeking a sustainable public safety personnel retirement system, requiring effective care and safety of residents in recovery homes and neighborhood residents, ensuring an adequate supply of water for the greater Prescott area. You know, as I said, greater Prescott area, because we're all in this together, you understand that. And determining a sensible level of sustainable growth. I am confident in the members of this council that we have the requisite knowledge and ability to effectively meet the challenges that face Prescott tomorrow and in the future. I know all of you are aware that adequate funding is essential for city government to meet the needs of its citizens. Whether the source of funding is from the general fund or a enterprise fund, Prescott needs to maintain a reasonable level of infrastructure in roads, streets, water and sewer systems, also in public service, to ensure continued growth in both economic development and tourism for Prescott. This is essential for us to achieve adequate funding to support our city's needs. So I ask for your patience and your constructive input as we work through how best to determine the appropriate level of services for this city. While I was running for this office and later after the election, I had many, many people come to me and indicate that they wished to serve this city in some capacity. The sincerity and giving nature of the citizens of our town is remarkable, and it's what makes it such a great place to live and raise our children. I'm humbled by the support that I have received and the covenant you have expressed in me to be your mayor, and I look forward to serving our city as your new mayor. Thanks again.
Mayor Oberg, that sounds really good, doesn't it?
Yeah.
It does. And council, I'm just honored to be here today. I have just a few comments. I wrote down just about 30 seconds worth, but I just want to say, I think it's so appropriate that I have the chance today to say those things for which I am grateful, because here we are celebrating Thanksgiving in two days, and we have so much to be thankful for in this wonderful city. First of all, I want to thank my husband. Forty-three years we've been married, and I'm not sure he signed up for this when he signed that. But I will tell you, this past year, with the campaign, it's been impossible without his support, and so now he's signed up for another four years, whether he knows it or not. So, thank you, Bob. I appreciate that. Mayor Kirkendall, thank you for your advice throughout the campaign. I had the chance to sit and talk with you and all members of the council. Hard to believe, but I have enjoyed coming to these council meetings for the last year and a half, and I've learned a lot. I also want to thank my committee. Had a wonderful committee, many of them in the audience. We were led by Phyllis Robinson. We had a lot of fun doing it, but thank you, Phyllis. The citizens of Prescott, thank you for your trust and your support and for your votes. I am truly humbled to be sitting here and representing you. So here's my commitment to Prescott. I will listen to all sides. I will study the issues. I will do my homework. And I will make a decision through a single lens, and that is what is best for our lovely city of Prescott. I will be honest, and I will be accessible. I will be tenacious to my fellow council members and staff. I look forward to working with each and every one of you. So, let's get to work. I'm ready to go. Thank you very much.
Harry, thanks for standing up. Billy, thanks for standing up. I've enjoyed the last 12 years working with previous councils, every one of them. Everybody that has chosen to stand up in service above self and try and help this community have done so for righteous reasons. It's been an honor to serve with all of them. Malin, you've been a wonderful man to serve with, not just be my friend for so long, but to serve with on council here. Chris and Charlie, they were wonderful to serve with, as were many of their predecessors. I mean, I can't think of one council member in those 12 years that I can honestly say I dislike, period. Okay? That goes without saying. I respect every one of my fellow councilmen. I respect Gene. While we may not agree on every object, we are not clones. We were never meant to be clones. That's the beauty of democracy. So with that, I will commit, as I have committed, to serve this community with honesty, integrity, tenacity, and my genuine willingness to help. And I want to thank you all for the opportunity and the privilege.
Do any of the other members of council want to say anything?
There'll be enough to be said in the next two years or so.
I'm sure of that. I guess I. I was going to give you the opportunity.
Mayor, I guess officially would like to welcome you and Billy and Steve that's not here, but thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, we'll move on to the first action item.
Item 1A, Appointment of Mayor Protem. As you know, mayor and council, as you know, the Prescott City Charter states that the council shall designate one of its members as mayor pro tem, who shall serve at the pleasure of the council. The mayor pro tem shall perform the duties of the mayor during his absence. This item is being presented for the purpose of selecting a mayor pro tem for the remainder of calendar year 2015 and calendar year 2016. So at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, at this time, I'll take motions from the council on the name for pro tem.
Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Looks like I have. Councilwoman Orr.
Thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, I would like to nominate Jim Lamerson for mayor pro tem.
Second.
Thank you. It would be an honor to do that.
Do I have any other nominations?
I think, Mayor, since there's a motion and a second, you have to go to a vote on the motion in a second.
Okay, fine. So we already have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Okay, since we don't have the names up here of everybody, I'll go ahead and have the clerk go ahead and do a roll call vote.
This is on the motion to appoint Councilman Lamerson as mayor pro tem. Mayor Oberg?
Aye.
Councilman Blair?
Yea.
Councilman Lamerson?
Yea.
Councilman Lozelle?
Aye.
Councilwoman Orr?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Yes.
Passes six to zero.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations. Item B.
Item 1B, City Council Meeting Schedule for December 2015. Mayor and council, this item is presented for approval of a revised city council meeting schedule for the month of December 2015. The proposed schedule complies with the city charter requirement of holding a council meeting at least two times per month and recognizes the December holiday. The proposal is to hold the first meeting in December as a combined workshop and regular voting meeting, and then on December 15th, hold the second meeting of the month as the regular voting meeting. If approved, the dates of the meetings for December will be December 1st, combined workshop and regular voting meeting; December 8th, the meeting would be canceled; December 15th, the regular voting meeting; and then December 22nd, the meeting canceled. Canceled, I'm sorry. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any discussion?
I just have one comment that I hope one of our first actions after the first of the year is then to discuss the meeting schedule that takes place throughout the next year. I have been one that hasn't purposely, for one reason or another, have not enjoyed the past schedule, even though I understand it. I was part of it, and as democracy moves, I supported it, but I hope we look at a new schedule in the future.
Okay. Any other comments? Any comments from the public? Okay, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the revised city council meeting schedule for December 2015 set forth in the council agenda memo.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Go ahead and take a roll call vote.
Mayor Oberg?
Aye.
Councilman Blair?
Yes.
Councilman Lamerson?
Yes.
Councilman Lozelle?
Aye.
Councilwoman Orr?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Yes.
Passes six to zero.
Well, that concludes this meeting. Thank you for attending. This meeting is adjourned.